In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the IT people here in this building, as you know, this is the first time that we have computers and everything. If you are not speaking, he said to me, you need to turn your mics off, because if there's more than three mics that are red, you're not going to be able to hear. The fourth person won't be able to talk. So that was something new. I wasn't told before, but I'm telling you guys now. So when, if I call your name, you say yes, then turn your mic on and turn it off on the side, not just, or maybe you can just turn it off here, I don't know. But anyway, you need to turn it off. Okay. So, Councilman Morrison? I think we can hear you. Theodore Chase? Robert La Court? Shaw Keller? Jennifer Ragnow?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Charles Brown? Robert Thomas? Rebecca Hilbert, I don't see, and Mark Dancy? And Mike Garcini?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, so there are no minutes. We have one resolution, Chad Rossback, PLN 240003.
Okay, so for Chad Rossback, that hearing, that hearing, the applicant was denied. So I'm only calling the members on the board that were for the denial. So that means Theodore Chase, Robert La Court, Charles Brown, and Mark Dancy are the only ones that can vote on that resolution. So we need a first and a second?
Second.
Okay. Theodore Chase? Robert La Court? Charles Brown?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to, there's no discussion items, so before we start the hearing, this is the time of the meeting that we open to the public for any general planning comment. So if you're here for Onyx, please wait until the meeting is open to the public on that matter. But if there are any general planning comments, now is the time. So I would make a motion to open the public for any general planning comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open for any general planning comments. Seeing no takers, move to close.
Second.
Please come to my room. I'm sure if you, if you honorable members can just give a little insight about when a project will require a variance, as opposed to changing the entire zoning for an area. So for example, if something was, let's say, zoned for like, if something was zoned for no warehouse, when would it go to the planning board? Or when would it go to the zoning board to seek a variance? Please. Yeah, I can take a stab at that. So the zoning board hears things called use variances or devariances. So if the use is not permitted in the zone, it goes to the zoning board. If the use is permitted in the zone, and there are variances such as setbacks, impervious coverage, or any design waivers that are required, then it would come before the planning board. Okay, thank you, sir. Any other members wishing to speak in a general planning sense? Seeing no hands raised, and move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we turn it over to Mr. Landford for Onyx, let me just do a little preamble here for how things are going to go. So as most of you know, right now, as of today, there is no zone in the township in which warehouses are permitted. So you say, well, maybe, why are they, why are they coming? So anything that was deemed a completed application prior to that decision being made must be heard, and was permitted as of the time that their application was deemed complete. So this application falls under those conditions. What we're going to do is after each of the witnesses that the applicant calls, we're going to open to the public. So I'm going to handle this more like a zoning board matter, just due to the number of public here and due to the question. When you come up, if you want to speak, treat it like a, treat it like a legal proceeding, which it actually is, and ask questions when I call you. And I'm going to just have to wing it in terms of the number of people who want to speak, so we can hear the maximum number of people. So in terms of time limits, I'll reserve judgment on that. But use your time wisely. If you come up and you want to make a comment or ask the witness a question, please do so. What we don't need is, you know, personal anecdotes about how you're stuck in traffic, almost got hit by a truck trailer, anything like that. You know, we need to stick to the facts, and we need to try to make the most of the time we have tonight. We will call proceedings at 10 o'clock, so any witnesses that can finish before 10 will have. Anything that starts or will continue after 10 will have to continue. And go ahead, Jim.
All right, if I just want to make one more comment. There will be a separate portion of the meeting when your opinions, okay, will be permitted, all right? That'll be at the end, after all the testimony is in, and any comments from Buckeye Pipeline are in, then you'll have a separate portion of time to give your opinion for or against the application.
Thanks, Jim. And with that, I'll turn it over to Peter for Onyx, 79 LLC, PLN 2200017.
Try again. Is it working now? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Landford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This matter was originally filed as an application for site plan approval on April 12, 2023. The matter was scheduled for a hearing, and a hearing took place on April 17, 2024. During that hearing in April of 2024, certain issues and concerns and questions were raised by certain board members, and that application contained certain variances. At the end of that hearing, my client made a determination that there needed to be revisions to the plan to eliminate the concerns that the board had. We resubmitted, submitted plans. Those plans were reviewed by your staff. We had meetings with your staff, some as late as today. We've addressed a lot of the issues. There are still one or two that we are working through, but feel comfortable that we can resolve. But what we have here is essentially a different plan than what was displayed back in April. So I'm going to start tonight with my site engineer to go through the site, to go through the changes that we made, and explain everything to the board, and hopefully we will have addressed the concerns that the board had in April, the concerns that the staff had, and the staff reports that were recently issued. And then we would be happy to answer any questions that either the board or members of the public may have. Also, before I call Mr. Cahill, as has happened with the prior hearings that we had in this building, we will have the exhibits on the screen. However, Mr. Cahill is a little bit old school, so he likes to talk with boards. The boards will be the same as what's on the screen and what everybody is seeing. But he will reference both the boards and the screens. Having said all of that, I would like to have Mr. Cahill sworn.
Raise your right hand. Sondly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Keith Cahill, C-A-H-I-L-L, with the firm of Bowler Engineering, located at 30 Independence Boulevard, Warren, New Jersey, 07059.
Mr. Cahill, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Can you give the board briefly the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Certainly. I have a civil engineering degree from Rutgers University. I have a master's degree in engineering from Stevens Institute of Technology. Been practicing civil engineering for the past 30 years, for the past 27 years specifically at Bowler Engineering, doing civil engineer, site plan design. I'm a principal at Bowler Engineering. I oversee the four New Jersey offices for Bowler Engineering.
And Bowler Engineering prepared the original site plan in this application and the revised site plan, which is the subject of our discussion this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, that is. And I've been testifying throughout the state of New Jersey in excess of 100 different municipalities, and accepted as an expert witness in all cases. As you, as you will be here. So Mr. Cahill is accepted.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that the attorney for Buckeye Pipeline has no questions and no objection to this witness's qualifications. Please, appearance for the record while I have you here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Wisneski, Wisneski and Associates, representing Buckeye Partners LLP.
Thank you.
Mr. Cahill, I guess it would be easier if you're going to rely on the boards to use the microphone that's over there, and I will have one of your associates man the computer.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. What I'd like to do is start going through a couple exhibits and give you a brief, a brief description of the overall project. Please remind me if I am not loud enough for anyone back there. I want to make sure you see everything that's on the screen. The exhibit that I have up, as mentioned by my attorney here, I'm old school, and I like to show both the boards and what's on the screen. So please don't hesitate to speak up if you can't hear me. I'm trying to do my best with that. I want to start with my first exhibit. I think we're going to call it A1.
Is it a colorized version of what was submitted?
This is an aerial exhibit that has not been submitted. Just going to give an overview of it. I'm going to mark it A1 entitled Aerial Exhibit A.
Prepared under direction and control?
Yes.
Mr. Landford, any objection?
None.
Okay.
And this is dated 1/25/2024, prepared by Bowler Engineering, marked A1. Okay. For reference, what you can see here, the site itself is outlined in red. For reference, north, unfortunately, folks, is going to be down to the bottom of the page as shown at the arrow at the top, because it just shows everything nicely. This is a great example of what the site looks like today. It's representative of that. As you can see, the site outlined in red is 6.15 acres. It is known as 785 Old New Brunswick Road, Block 507.15, Lot 2.01. And it's located in the BI Zone, or the Business Industrial Zone, in the retail district overlay. For reference here, we're located at the northwest, well, referred to as the northwest corner of Old New Brunswick Road and New Brunswick Road, and you should see that T-intersection here. Just for reference, and give you some ideas here, the size of this site, we have approximately 720 feet of frontage along New Brunswick Road, and we have approximately 480 feet of frontage along Old New Brunswick Road. Surrounding sites, what's around us, we have the shopping center. To our west, we have the ShopRite, the Hers Distribution, and a nursing home facility, rehabilitation facility to the north. And both to the south and east of our site is a residential development that you may all be aware of in terms of Somerset Run condominiums. That gives you the general overview around it. You can see also the lands, there's a portion of the land that is vacant that is also owned by the residential community as well. Just, I want to give a couple other brief points. What you see on this site is, has been previously approved and partially constructed, which is a 55,419 square foot retail building, as you can see here. It is visible to New Brunswick Road. When you drive past it, you can see in there, obviously very visible from Old New Brunswick Road. There's also a structure, a small residential structure of approximately 839 square feet. Just for reference, you can see that up in the northern corner here. It's about 15 feet from the property lines, the side property line, about 45 feet from the existing right-of-way of Old New Brunswick Road. The site itself, because it's partially built, doesn't have the best appearance today. There's debris on the site, the construction in terms of the stormwater management system wasn't fully compliant or constructed. In general, the landscaping was never completed. Lack of a better term, it's not visible, not friendly to the eye. And anticipating a redevelopment, the intent is to make it look a lot nicer. So we'll go through that in a moment. But a couple other key points to the existing conditions of this site that you should be aware of. In general, the high point of this site is in the top right corner of this exhibit. We're in the south, in the southwest corner, and grades to the south, or to the northeast corner. In this area, up by the intersection, the T-intersection of Old New Brunswick Road, in that area is a small ditch and a head wall with the start of a stream. There is wetlands in that corner, small pocket. We've obtained the proper NJDEP letters of interpretation to determine the limit of that. That's valid now. Along with that ditch, there's a riparian buffer. And as part of this application, there's also a buffer from the Delaware and Rarican Canal Commission. So this corner with the trees, again, up at the T-intersection, is environmentally sensitive, and we have to be aware of it. We have to preserve it, and we have to comply with all the regulations of the NJDEP, your local municipality, as well as the DNR Canal. A couple other constraints that I think are important is that, and obviously we're here, is the Buckeye Pipeline. That runs in a north-south direction through our site. I can highlight it and trace it, but to give you some idea, it splits the property of the Hers Distribution and the nursing home facility, and comes onto our site just to the west of our entrance drive, and goes all the way up and crosses New Brunswick Road in our southern property corner, goes into the residential development, and splits the townhomes in that development as well. The pipeline goes throughout Franklin Township. It crosses numerous roads. It goes through numerous neighborhoods. It's something we have to deal with, and there's regulations that the pipeline, Buckeye, has prepared, and we have to follow and show. And our intention is to follow those and work with them to make sure that any type of development on this property will be in compliance with what they need to do to protect their pipeline, to protect our access to it, and of course, protect the safety of the community. That's what we're committing to. And there's numerous drawings within our site plan package that has been submitted that shows the profiles of where that pipeline is, shows our setbacks to it, and things to that nature. So I just wanted to be very clear. It's not unusual that when you do construction in Franklin Township, you have to deal with pipelines. This isn't the only pipeline in town. There's others, and we have to deal with them. So, and I've personally dealt with them in numerous spots in the, in your community. Pro-Tech Hockey, I think the Pro Care cancer facility, I know I had to deal with it as well. So different pipeline, but same premise. We have to understand when we're developing a site, we need to protect the public, we need to protect the infrastructure. This is no different than any other application when that is in our property, or is on a site that we're going to redevelop. Couple other key points too, as I mentioned, this site has impervious coverage. It's really not up to today's standards for stormwater management, any type of redevelopment. We have to meet the standards of this town. We have to meet the state standards because we have wetlands, and the state, and the community has adopted those. We also have additional regulations with soil erosion from the county, as well as the DNR Canal. All of those agencies are going to be reviewing everything that we designed to make sure that we're in compliance with those codes, and that we're improving, improving the existing conditions that exist today. And that is our intention, and I will explain how we are going to do that with the redevelopment. Couple other quick points. It's interesting enough to know that the current building is about 12.5 feet from the pipeline, almost in the easement. If you look at the survey, the easement is adjacent to the external wall in the northeast corner. The pipeline is 12 feet. It was a retail development, to have the general public in and out of there all day long. We are intending to demolish this development and reconstruct the building to be further away from the pipeline, improve that situation. So I just wanted to point that out. Couple other things. New Brunswick Road, it was built in approximately 2002, 2006, if you look at the aerials. This development, this site has been developed since the 80s. Industrial uses, there's other types of uses. There's a proposal for a school, all in the area around this pipeline. That site, impervious coverage, roadways up to 12 to 18 feet from the existing road. That exists today. Pull out your, along New Brunswick Road, you see driveways, you see asphalt, you see piles of stuff, a parking lot, 18 feet from the right-of-way, okay? Not in compliance with today's standards. Today, you have to have a 50-foot buffer. Want to perfect this and build it out as it is? You don't need to, because we were already built. The intent is to redevelop it, make it better, and provide the buffers that your town has asked to provide to your residential development. And that's our intent. I think everything relative to the existing conditions, they are the most important items that I think kind of puts a framework on what we are looking to deal with, the constraints that we have on site, and how we want to redevelop the site. I want to go to my next exhibit, which was going to be entitled A2.
Mr. Cahill, prepared under your direction and control?
Yes. A2 is entitled C-301 Site Plan Layout. This exhibit, colorized for today's presentation, is dated 1/25/2025. It's the exact same sheet that was in the site plan package that was in your, that was submitted before. We've enhanced it for colorization. For reference again, north will be to the bottom of the page. And we've had different colors, green in general is just about landscaping, that bright red line that runs to the north and south, again, is the Buckeye Pipeline, the tan is the building. Just to give you some overall facts about this, because I want to kind of go back and refer a couple things in history. The proposal that's in front of you tonight, after we revised the plan since the prior hearing in April, is a 91,309 square foot warehouse building. That inside of that footprint is 1,995 square feet of office, and it has 89,314 square feet of warehouse. This proposal shows setbacks for the building completely in compliance with the bulk standards of the, of the development ordinance. So we're not requesting any variances relative to the bulk variances, the bulk, the bulk table for setbacks, impervious coverage, building coverage, location of basins, location of buffer, the size of buffers. We also revised the stormwater management to be fully compliant with the new stormwater management regulations for the NJDEP for water quality, which at the time of this original application was not in place. So we were kind of grandfathered in on that, similar to the comment about warehousing being fully compliant, a permitted use in this zone. And I'll say that again, this development is a permitted use for a warehouse in this zone, and we're complying with all of the bulk standards. We are requesting one variance, which your ordinance has a setback from the pipeline that requires a 100-foot setback. I mentioned before, the building that sits there today is 12.65 feet. This is 43 feet, 43 and a half feet away. We are going to request that variance. I will get to the pipeline further, and I'll go into the standards that Buckeye has for themselves, and what they referenced, and recommendations. So there's no restriction by them to be a certain distance. And if there is, there's design standards, and I will say we have to stay out of the easements and things to that. I don't want to contradict any of the design standards. I went through them all. But I just want to make sure we're on the same page. This development does have 47 parking stalls, is in compliance with the ordinance, has 10 loading areas for trucks, which I will get into detail. But I wanted to make sure you see what today's application is about. It has full circulation around the building. The loading zones is to the east of the site, fully compliant with a buffer to that to screen that area. The parking for the office areas is to the west side of it. And there's two separate accesses for that to separate the entrance from, separation from the car vehicles and the truck. Yep, sorry. So this as an overview is what's proposed tonight. What I want to do is refresh everyone's memory of the application or the hearing that occurred in April this year, which will be my third exhibit, A3. A3 was also prepared under our purview, and it's entitled C-301 Site Plan Layout, but it's revision one dated 3/30/2023. This plan...
Before you go further, that was the plan that was presented to the board in, at the last hearing?
Yes.
And the only thing that is different is that it is now colorized for tonight's hearing?
Yes. Colorized, and in a similar fashion, north will be to the bottom of the page. And the colors representing, the green is landscaping, the tan is the building, and that red line is the pipeline again. This is what we showed before, and actually, the first building that we submitted to this town to review was 128,796 square feet. We came in and had comments from your professionals, and we reduced the building to what's shown on the screen today on A3, which was 102,733 square feet. This applica, this project shown in front of you had variances for setbacks. It had, it did not have the stormwater management in compliance in today's standards. It had porous pavement throughout. You can see the separation through the pipeline was far less in regards to that. And the landscaping was different as well. And a couple critical There you go. Are you there? Sorry about that. You can, you notice a key point here. We didn't have fire access around the entire building. The driveway coming out had a different shape in regards to that. The building was much closer to the street, to be exact. The original submission was 16.5 feet, and we had pushed that back to approximately 50 feet. Now, this building is much larger. And as I mentioned, we reduced the square footage from 128,796 to now, what is today, 91,000, about 30,000. from 128,796 to now, what is today, 91,000, about 30% increase in reduction in size of the building. We also took comments from your fire official about adding an emergency road around it. We had comments about additional fire hydrants, we had comments about improving the site circulation relative to the driveways. And we learned a couple of key points too, in terms of truck traffic, where the traffic must go, and we'll reinforce that too as I get into this, but the trucks are being forced to make when we exit the site to the right, because we learned the roadway to the west side towards the shopping center is a private road. So we're not going to go towards that direction, and we'll force all our trucks to go out from Old New Brunswick Road out to New Brunswick Road. The difference here, the difference here again, is that we're, we're listening to the professionals of your town with the guidance of improving the application to make it more compliant with the regulations, the standards, to improve the circulation, improve the safety relative to fire protection, and improve the landscaping, as I'll get to. So, I just brought this up to remind you where we were in April, and now I want to go back to A2 and go into the details of the proposal tonight. So Dan, if you could, go to A2. Okay, in, relative to this application, I'm going to repeat it again. Permitted use, we're not deviating from the bulk standards in terms of height, we're in compliance, just less than 50 feet in height. Our front yard setback is 50 feet, we've pushed the building back, and have even the stormwater improvements out of that setback as well, which is required. So there's no variance required for that. I want to circulate, I point out again, remind you that now we have a roadway that completely circulates around the building, as requested by the fire official. Just to walk you through the site, the, as I mentioned in terms of accessing the site, we have two driveways. Primarily, the office of the building is on the west side. The driveway farthest to the west, or right behind the shopping center, is intended to be 26-foot wide in compliance with the ordinance, where the prior application, for the prior submission was 24. This is where the cars would enter, and all the parking along that side would be utilized to go to the office in this corner of the building. There's no trucks entering there, we separate the car traffic from the truck traffic. The size of those parking stalls is in compliance with the ordinance, by 9 by 18. We provide sufficient 88 handicap parking stalls, again, in accordance with the ordinance, and we're also in compliance with the, the EV charging of that. We did have a comment from your engineer to modify it slightly, and we intend to comply with all the comments from the township engineer in regards to this application, which I, we'll go through later. But the parking is in compliance for size, location, setback, and the need based on the size of the building and the size of the office. Flipping over to the other driveway on the east side, which is for trucks only, the anticipated truck route would be again coming off of New Brunswick Road. We modified that driveway to make it align less, I'll say curvature, but make it easier to come in. We have 10 loading spaces on the east side of the driveway, again, fully compliant with the size of the town's ordinance. We also have two spots, one for the, on the north side of those loading courts for a trash compactor, which is also in compliance with the regulations for recycling for your town. And on the south end of that loading court, we also have a ramp that goes into the building. I want to highlight the point that another item was the size of this loading court, there is a geometry requirement there. The prior submission did not comply with it, it was 130 feet, now it's 147. Again, just to make the ease of the movements for the trucks coming in and out of. We've also enhanced the site for circulation with signage in and around it, making sure we complied with the environmental commission comments about no idling. We did have a comment from them that they liked porous pavement, however, we weren't in fully compliance with the stormwater management regs, so we've resubmitted to them. In this submission, as I mentioned, we are fully compliant with the green infrastructure that the state requires, and I'll point out three things there. In general, going into the stormwater, we had to add three bio-retention basins. First one on the north side of the building, and it's landscaped, you can see in accordance with those regulations. Second one that is over by the, I'll say the south side of the loading court, and the third one is an area just to the east of the loading court. All of these items, stormwater management basins, collect water from either the parking lot or from the roofs. We also have one other underground basin that you can see, it's very difficult to see, but it's in this area intended for recharge of water. The water gets collected throughout the site, it gets filtered to the, the different elements for improving the water quality. It then comes out and discharges out into the ditch area where, as I mentioned before, all the existing stormwater on-site goes to today. We maintain that, we reduce the flow, we improve the water quality, and essentially make the site significantly better than today, but meeting today's standards, which is the highest, and even at the time of application, it's even been improved. So in regards to that, after redevelopment, this will have the highest level of water quality, reductions in stormwater, and reductions in volume of water leaving, because we're also putting our water back into the ground. Again, that will be reviewed by the state of New Jersey, the DNR Canal, this, your, your professionals, as well as the county, and the county Soil Conservation District. In regards to the driveway and the circulation, which I want to bring up, and I know is in the area, I got, Dan, can you do me a favor and go back to A1? In the air, I forgot to point out one thing. I mentioned briefly that our trucks, and at the last hearing, I think there might have been confusion, the roadway to the west between our property and what I'll call the hers development, towards Elizabeth Avenue, is private property, and we are not going to be sending our trucks that direction. Today, at Shop Right, you'll notice all trucks that load and go in and out are forced to go right, but they're part of that development and go out to Elizabeth Avenue. Our trucks, as I mentioned, will go out to New Brunswick Road. It is anticipated that trucks coming in now this facility, most likely will be coming from 287. They're going to be coming to our site from either exit 12 or 10, they could be coming from anywhere else on the, in the, in the state, but either way, they will get to New Brunswick Road, and they're going to have to circulate onto Old New Brunswick Road and in. There's a comment from your professional asking us to show truck turning exhibits off-site at this intersection, which we completely understand, and we will work with him to show them, we still need to do that, but we're confident that we can comply with the requirements that he needs to see to make sure that their circulation movements are safe. And what I mean by that is when trucks turn in and out, they don't cross double lanes, they don't cross into any other double lines of traffic, they don't cross any lanes of traffic. So at that point, having the circulation coming from that area, coming into our site, utilizing the, and Dan, why don't we go back to A2? They will be using a lot, utilizing our easternmost driveway, and the radius is there as well, or in compliance with standards that make those movements safe and efficient. One other item, how do I prevent trucks from making a left out of that road, that will be a concern? So, what is not shown on this exhibit, but I am confident we can make work, we've already done it in the office, but I can't really put it up today, is that we will put a, what we call a pork chop island, that'll force tractor trailers to go left. And it'll still allow the emergency vehicles to circulate, in terms of your fire official, it'll still allow the trucks entering in, and this site will operate effectively and safely with that, and prevent. Besides having that, the signage will indicate no, no left turns, arrows, exactly as the development just adjacent to us has signage up. But we're going to go one step further and put a barrier relative to an island to force traffic to go that direction. Now in regards to the professionals' comments, I'll get to that in a minute, but what was really important to us was making sure the fire official was satisfied having the circulation. We have a 24-foot wide roadway that goes around it, it's intended only for emergency vehicles relative to that. In other words, we're not going to allow tractor trailers to go around it, and we don't want cars to circulate behind it to go into the truck loading court, there's no need for that. In regards to other items, sufficient, significant to the development in town, is making sure that we comply with the lighting standards, the signage standards, and things to this nature. So for lighting, we have lighting attached to our building that's, that provides sufficient lighting to both sides of the, the parking, our driveway points, as well as our truck loading courts. Your planner did an excellent job reviewing our entire development relative to lighting and for the signage, and in his letter, you will see that we are fully compliant with the regulations for lighting design and the standards. We're using LSI, LED standards, it's energy efficient, will not have any glare off-site, and will not cross any property lines. In terms of the signage, we have signage on the building, our architect went through that last time. Again, we intend to be compliant, and we're not asking for any variances relative to signage. We do have a freestanding sign, excuse me, a building mound, two building mounded signs in accordance with your ordinance, one on the, called the east side, and one on the north side. In regard, and we have a freestanding sign out at the, in between our two driveways on the north side, again, compliant in terms of size, it's a monument sign, and in terms of setback from the roadway and area. The last thing I want to, or emphasize, is the landscaping that we have proposed. Sorry, just give me a second, too many numbers to remember. In regards to screening, as I mentioned, the existing site as it sits today is within 20 feet of the roadway. It does not have a full barrier of landscaping, it doesn't have any types of fence for screening. What we're proposing and is required by your ordinance is a 50-foot buffer, which you can see in here, this nice green swath along the south side. You also notice there's two rows of plantings on there. There are evergreen shrubs, evergreen trees, shade trees along our road frontage, things to that nature, that not only, not only we'll be screening what the operations inside of the building, inside of the courtyard, there's also a six-foot-high solid fence up along our curb line that will also screen the activity that occurs on site. So we're providing distance in terms of a buffer, we're providing vertical with a fence that starts day one, we're providing evergreen trees up to 10 feet in height, that'll continue to grow and get a bigger buffer, but there's two sides of that, two rows of that in there. The only area where we cannot plant, and our friends from Buckeye can explain it if you don't believe me, I'm not allowed to plant inside of that easement. We have to keep our trees far enough away so if the limbs don't grow into it, because if they do, they're going to come along and cut them anyway. So we're going to do a nice job working with them to make sure we comply with their requests, but we still will do everything we can to screen that view from New Brunswick Road. To give you some numbers, the prior development required to plant 119 trees because they cut down trees. We're proposing only to cut 18 more trees down to do that, which is less than was before. Environmental Commission asks us to go look and save a few, how many more can we leave? Look at the existing vegetation in this corner and along New Brunswick Road and see how many trees we can. We can save, but we still need to cut 18 trees down, which requires us to replace 13 more. The 119 to 13 is the number that is about 132, or we're replacing over 180 trees to do that. To give you an idea of all the different plants there, we have 546 different plants in terms of trees, shrubs, and plants, and 18 different species throughout the site. Those dark green areas where we have stormwater basins, we have requirements of conserv bio-retention basins, we have to plant an additional 321 plants and trees and shrubs of six different varieties. So in total, we have 867 plants and trees and shrubs going on this site, besides the fencing, and there are 24 different varieties of species that'll provide year-round screening, as well as a nice aesthetic look to the, to the traveling public in and around the New Brunswick Road and Old New Brunswick. Those items, again, I think are critical for this redevelopment, so that we are, like our pipeline friends here say, we want to be good neighbors, so do we. And we're looking to re-screen, redevelop this property to be the best we can. Just a couple other quick points, the utilities that we do need for the site are all available on Old New Brunswick Road in terms of water, gas, electric. We will need to cross those, the pipeline, we understand all the regulations they have. They will have representatives on-site if we get approved and we move forward with construction, and we intend to comply with all their regulations to be crossing their I just want to add a couple things. As I mentioned, where we started, we've reduced this project's...
Hold it like this.
All right, sorry about that, technical difficulties, and I probably did it, like my son says, I always create the problems with this stuff. I just want to summarize in saying that the intent here, and all of the time and effort between the last hearing and coming now, was to make this a better project, and listen to the professionals here, to give them the recommendations, to make sure that what we develop here is something that looks nice, as well as being as compliant as possible with the, with the standards of the zone, in terms of setbacks, landscaping, et cetera. The one variance we have is for the setback to the pipeline, and as I mentioned, the prior development that was on the site was more than three times closer to it, we're pulling it back further. It's not a safety concern because Buckeye has significant regulations to follow when construction is done adjacent to their right of way. Our intention is to comply with that. We have provided drawings and submitted application to them, they have provided their feedback to us, we still have some work to do with them in terms of the profile and making sure the amount of fill over top of it is compliant with their regulations. We did a lot of changes to comply with the New Jersey State Regulations for Stormwater, which caused some of the changes in grade. But I'm confident that what we have there, and following their regulations relative to construction in and around their pipeline, we can achieve both satisfaction and an approval from them for how we're proposing to do construction, as well as comply with the standards of the community and your ordinance for development of a permitted use in the zone. With that, I hope I hit all the comments, and if I missed anything. If there's nothing else, or I could get to the, the staff reports, or at least the engineering, which I think is pretty simply summarized.
Yeah, why don't you cover the engineering report from CME dated November 27th, 24? Because then the first action when you're done, Mr. Cahill, is I'm gonna turn, turn the questions over to Darren, so he can ask any questions specific to the report, so that would be great if you could cover that.
Okay. So I'm referring to Darren's, the staff's... right-of-way. Our intention is to comply with that. We have provided drawings and submitted application to them. They have provided their feedback to us. We still have some work to do with them in terms of the profile and making sure the amount of fill over top of it is compliant with their regulations. We did a lot of changes to comply with the New Jersey State Regulations for Stormwater, which caused some of the changes in grade. But I'm confident that what we have there and following their regulations relative to construction in and around their pipeline, we can achieve both satisfaction and an approval from them for how we're proposing to do construction as well as comply with the standards of the community and your ordinance for development of a permitted use in the zone. With that, I hope I hit all the comments and if I missed anything. If there's nothing else, or I could get to the staff reports or at least the engineering, which I think is pretty simply summarized.
Yeah, why don't you cover the engineering report from CME dated November 27th, '24? Because then the first action when you're done, Mr. Cahill, is I'm gonna turn the questions over to Darren so he can ask any questions specific to the report. So that would be great if you could cover that.
Okay. So I'm referring to Darren's, the Township Engineer's Review Letter dated November 27th. Sorry. November 27th, 2024, which I have reviewed with Darren and gone through it. And I will say, one of the items I may have left out in terms of my testimony was that we are proposing sidewalk. I'll have to point to the exhibit. I've agreed to 99% of the comments in Darren's letter. He mentioned that we do have a waiver requested for sidewalk along New Brunswick Road. From a pedestrian standpoint, we have sidewalk that runs entirely along Old New Brunswick Road. We have access from our site out to the right-of-way, everything in compliance with ADA. There is also a sidewalk along the south side of New Brunswick Road, and in this area of sidewalk on, I'll call the north side of New Brunswick Road along our frontage, we had not proposed one. We respected, we effectively requested a waiver in a sense because the connection on the north side, or to the west side was not there. There is circulation from in and around the residential communities on the south side of New Brunswick Road. We have this environmentally sensitive area, which also challenged them to have a sidewalk. We're not opposed to sidewalks, but we felt it didn't mean to be sent here, provided value to be in this location. We know there's pedestrian circulation from the shopping center and the bus stops that are up along Elizabeth Road. This area, we did not have one. With that being said, I mentioned that if there's a further requirement, we can talk about it further, but that was a waiver relative to sidewalk. Everywhere else on this site, we are in compliance with that. And I was referring to comment number five in his letter. I'll pause and just say, on the balance of those comments in his letter, in general site improvement section, we do not have any concerns with complying with his comments. Number 13 specifically asked to look at the truck turning movements along the intersection of Old New Brunswick Road and New Brunswick Road, which we will do, and to his satisfaction, if that's a condition. There was a comment about the truck turning vehicle number 16, which we have done announced, and it's not a problem. We will show him too that that, that works. The balance of his comments in grading and utility and stormwater management, again, we have no concerns with any of those. We intend to comply with those. There's no concerns in terms of the stormwater management, and again, complying with his comments and to the regulations of the NJDEP. There was a comment in regards to having infiltration, as mentioned, being in compliance, and looking for a letter from our LSRP, which we just recently received to say that it was not a problem, which again, we'll provide to your professional. And the signage and different items requested in regards to details, the EV charging details, and anything else in there for details, and the outside agencies, we understand and we will comply and provide that as conditions of any type of action by this board.
Keith, in addressing those comments, does that in any way substantially alter what the board is looking at this evening or what the members of the public are looking at? Are most of them technical comments that need to be addressed?
Yeah, in terms of physical appearance to the site, no. Many things would be underground type things, so no changes that I would impact the plan that's in front of you in terms of, from a zoning perspective.
And with respect to all of the other reports that were issued, we will comply with those reports?
Yes, in terms of the fire official's comments, we had a letter after the last hearing. I think we addressed 99%. We just got a new letter requesting another hydrant, which we will comply with. He asked about continuing to clean up the site that has some debris and stockpiling that's underway now and being actively done, which we agree with also. So there's no concerns with those comments from the fire official or the sewage authority, which we did receive a letter. All of those comments we can agree to. I think in terms of the memo and the revised plans, as I mentioned, went to the Environmental Commission. I haven't received a new letter, but I think we've addressed their issues relative to landscaping, saving number of trees, and complying in the stormwater management side of the world. I think in regards to the traffic reports that were submitted, also to the other agencies that we're requesting, has been provided. I would like to address one item relative to the planning side. I mentioned your planners provided this guidance in terms of lighting and landscaping, different elements. And one of the main comments was, hey, why do you have the loading zone proposed in the direction that you have now? I mentioned where we started with this application in terms of being a building of approximately 130,000 square feet, and we're down to 91,000 square feet. We all understand the concerns of the Buckeye Pipeline. We also heard the desire to provide safe access to tractor trailers into the site and circulation on-site, and some of those standards require dimensions, specifically loading zone sizes, circulation sizes for the courtyard being out to 147 feet as shown in this application, as shown on this Exhibit A2. If we went to rotate that loading onto the opposite side towards the shopping center, I'm starting at at least 160 feet from that property line with that geometry, which then pushes my building over top of that pipeline much quicker. And as, if you looked at that, we're getting down to a building that would be under 50,000, closer to 35,000 square feet, which then at that point, an industrial type use and building really does not come as feasible or marketable in place. It just isn't good planning relative to that, to rotate that building because of the constraints that I mentioned on the site. The Buckeye Pipeline as well as in the north, or, excuse me, in the southeast corner, the environmentally sensitive areas that have the buffers relative to the wetlands, the stream, flood hazard and encroachment areas, the buffer areas. So in so doing, it starts to reduce the envelope that you can actually have something that would be feasible, that would be functional to this type of development. Therefore, we had to rotate it, and from a planning perspective, address the items that your ordinance anticipated, which was providing proper buffering, which we've complied with, providing both landscaping and permanent buffering with a fence from day one. All of those items, I think, address that concern, but I wanted to make sure it's clear from a planning perspective that we did look at items like this and came back with this product, that we feel addresses the ordinance and the planning aspects that were raised by your planner.
Just a quick follow-up. To be clear, based on the existence of that pipeline easement, we are not allowed to put any buildings upon the pipeline easement, correct?
That is correct.
However, we are allowed by virtue of the easement, again, subject to working everything out with them, allowed to put roadways and parking areas and things of that nature over the easement.
That is correct.
So that's why we have the ability to put the truck court where we are proposing it and taking advantage to some degree of the ability to traverse the easement with the truck court and truck circulation.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And even in their review letter, there was no comment in terms of the activities that were on top of the, their easement, as long as we're in compliance with their standards and the conditions of our easement that's on-site, which we are.
I don't think I have any other questions of Mr. Cahill.
Okay, I'll open it up to board questions initially. I just wanted first go to Darren because you want to uncover anything engineer to engineer.
Sure, thank you. So as part of the original application, one of my larger concerns was the driveway. Let me start over. So as part of the original application, one of my larger concerns was the site driveway, which originally was unsafe. They have addressed, the majority of the comments here, we're okay with what they're proposing with the stipulation that that pork chop island, if the board act favorably, would be a requirement. And just looking at the driveway, the only other recommendation I would have is just in the northwest corner of the driveway would be to reduce the radii, just to eliminate any trucks who would try to come in, right, which I wanted to see if Mr. Cahill would have any objection to. Okay. The other, another area of concern I did have was with the original application was a loading court, which there was a variance request that's now removed. The reason why I had that initial concern, just for the board's edification, edification, is because I was concerned that trucks would have to make K-turns originally wouldn't have, you know, just a quick in-and-out movement, which this redesign now shows I can just back into these spots safely without having to do more maneuverability, which Mr. Cahill has testified to, but I wanted to make sure the board's aware. Now, in terms of the old New Brunswick, New Brunswick roadway, Mr. Cahill has stated he's going to provide a turning template for further review. As part of what we've discussed, I would be analyzing that to make sure that trucks do not turn over the W yellow line in either direction. That's going to be a critical. If it does, it's going to be something that's not approved. As part of that, that might require the applicant potentially to get either a DEP permit because they're in that environmentally sensitive area, or property on the opposite corner, which it's going to depend on the layout. It's not known at this time, but it's something that I would hold on to at that time. I just want to make sure the board's aware. Now, in terms of the, what we call the northeast corner of that intersection, if you guys could just put that exhibit back up. Okay. So if that curve, if that curve line is going to be wide, increased in radii to make a turning movement work, the only other request I would have is if you're going to touch that handicap ramp in order to make the turning movement work, that you'd bring that handicap ramp up to the standard, but that's going to be dependent on what's there. I just want to make sure everybody understands what we would be looking for from the township perspective.
We understand, and we don't have a concern with complying with that.
Okay. Let me just kind of go for a second.
Sure. For the record, before Darren goes on, the issue of that New Brunswick Road, Old New Brunswick intersection first appeared in this last set of comments. That was not a comment in any of the prior iterations. So we got it, and it was just recent, and we are tackling it, and we will address it. The reason we don't have answer, complete answers today is because we just got the comment with his last report, and we, but we understand what the comment is, and we can deal with it.
Yep. And the reason why that comment is there, just because it wasn't clear in the last hearing whether they could traverse the private right-of-way, or private right-of-way, which they've now testified that they can't. He's already, he's testified that he's going to satisfy all the requirements of the stormwater testing that's still outstanding, just for the board's record. The typical testing timeline is usually in the January, April season, so I have recommended offline that they do their testing, sooner or later, depending on where this application goes with the board, but that's just another matter. But he has gone through, I guess, the only other item that would be left to discuss really, and it's going to be the board's determination, is the sidewalk along Old New Brunswick. Typically, I do that recommendation. It's part of, it's a waiver requirement, but also that recommendation's there just to prohibit, or to promote a walking, walking community. But there are times where the board is also taking the stance of asking for a contribution, so I would leave that to the board members on what the preference would be. Those are the main parts of my comments. Maybe ask a question of the engineer before you.
Good thing. Thanks, Darren. Yeah, we'll open it up to board questions. Charles, I think you're going to leverage this, so go ahead.
Yeah, certainly not in favor of a waiver to not place a sidewalk around the site. I'm in favor of sidewalk on all sides. We have a complete streets policy in the township. We should honor that by ensuring the protection of cyclists. It not only protects cyclists, it protects everyone using the roadway. So we should never waive that, in my opinion. And we've also seen payments in lieu. We don't know where those payments happen. I've never seen an assessment of sidewalks being built as a result of that, so I remain curious as it relates to the payment in lieu. When it comes to the, the truck turning movement, I'm curious why he wasn't required to bring that tonight for the public to see. Why is that something that we see later, given how important it is, and it's not the first time that they've received that comment?
Just so we're clear, we had truck turning comments from the prior hearing on the on-site, and when we resubmitted, we then got that comment. I actually have an exhibit to show what can be done, but I didn't want to introduce anything new because it was new to us on how to resolve it, like what would be specifically required. We looked at it. We have truck turning that shows what would be impacted. We can make this work on our lands, but as mentioned, I have to define the DEP amount of impact, and I wanted to have my answers to it, but if it was satisfactory to show a radius to say, I can get a truck to make a right turn onto Old New Brunswick, oh, excuse me, on, from Old New Brunswick Road onto New Brunswick Road, we can achieve that. What has to occur, but we did not update all of the drawings to show this, so that's why it wasn't being able to be done because it is impactful on the entire package. But to just show that I can make it work, yes, and I can work with your professionals to show that. And what happens is, the radius gets around into our environmentally sensitive areas. We need to build retaining walls. We have to get approvals for the encroachment of the buffers, which the math shows we can make that within the GP, the general permits of the DEP. We just need to, it's just a lot to do in a short period of time. I can say it's feasible, and that other than that intersection off of our site, we can make that occur.
I think respectfully, you gave an excellent testimony. I respect your engineering judgment, but I need to trust and verify. We need to see proof that what you're saying can actually happen. And if it's, if it's so easy to be done, it could have been done prior to tonight.
It's, I didn't say it was easy, but I did say we could get it done.
If you have them, go ahead and show your drawings.
Okay. What I don't want to disappoint anybody with.
We won't hold you to it.
No, no, not that. Is that it impacts things.
Understood.
On, I have 18 or 20-some sheets, right? So that is a lot of work and time.
You can introduce it that way.
Right. So all I can do is say, hey, this is what it looks like at this intersection.
Let's see it.
No, not yet.
Let me jump in for a second here. Because we don't have a radius plan, because the staff hasn't reviewed it, and this goes for the pork chop island as well, and because the public hasn't seen it, right? The board cannot vote this application tonight, even if we were to finish, okay?
Understood.
It's got to come back for a second night so that the review process, as we customarily handle it, okay, will be adhered to.
That's great, because it will give us more time to make it look nicer and spend time, because it does, though it can be drawn quickly, it doesn't have the everything that goes with it. That's.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay.
So we will go to the rest of the board, and I know a lot of people have questions. Let me just pursue this a little bit because I have a question.
Sure.
So I totally agree with Charles in that the sidewalk should be provided on Old New Brunswick Road. You, you don't have an isolated site here. You have the ability to walk to the shopping center and restaurants that are right next to your site. You have the ability to walk across the street to ShopRite. You have the ability to walk across the street to the other plaza. So I think that's important. If it were isolated and, you know, partly in industrial park where nothing was around, that's one thing. Here, you know, there's a reason to walk there. So I agree with Charles there. The thing, the question I have about your turning movements, though, is why you would want a truck to do what you described? Why wouldn't you want it just to go out to Elizabeth the way ShopRite comes in and not have to make that turn and not have to deal with any of the stuff rather than going around, you know, right out of the site, you go left and you're on Elizabeth, you're to 287, or you're down Schoolhouse and you're to 287. Why wouldn't you want to do that?
Can you please repeat that question?
I said, why would you want to bring truck traffic on New Brunswick Road and make that convoluted turn, which you need a lot of engineering to do? And why not just go right out to Elizabeth like the ShopRite trucks come in and make a no right turn out of your site, left only?
So you're suggesting that the trucks go through the private easement?
They do now. They do now. And, and it has to be a public street for them to either come in, right? So I mean, it's not like you're getting approval.
It is, let me go back in history.
Okay, that actually might be useful.
Because uh.
I can show, I can show something graphically too.
All right, and I'll explain the history and then you can show. When the ShopRite application came in. The Old New Brunswick Road was a public roadway from New Brunswick Road to Elizabeth Avenue. Then the owner of ShopRite came in with the commercial space. Across the street. Which is where Frank's Pizza is, there's some uh, other eating establishments. So that the same owner owned both sides of the street. At that time, and it was a zoning board application. The zoning board wanted to make it pedestrian friendly so people could park on one side and walk over to the other side. They required that there be speed humps put in and tables there for, for walking and for crossing the street. Which would not normally be allowed on public right of ways. So at that point in time. It was discussed that perhaps since the owner owned both sides of the street. That the council vacate. That portion of New Brunswick Road on either side of the shopping center. So that it became part of the shopping center. The council did vacate the road, it was duly filed. That road is not for public access other than to, uh, for the shopping center. Now, I know people use it, but legally it is for public access, not also. Uh. I did that application how many years ago? Uh, I still have a relationship with the owner. And I did make inquiry of the owner as to whether he would uh, grant us an easement for our trucks to go. Through that uh, area so that they would then make a left turn out to Elizabeth Avenue. And his response was that he was unwilling to grant that easement, so we did pursue that. So, we do not have the legal right to run our trucks out to Elizabeth Avenue through that shopping center. Now, Keith can go on.
Just so you can see exactly what we're talking about, this aerial going back to A1. You can see the lines for Old New Brunswick and you see a dark line that cuts across, that's the end of the public road. From that point to the west until you get to the intersection where again, a solid black line crosses. That is private road. And as described, the improvements that are along here, like stop signs in the middle of what it feels like a road. It's actually like a driveway if you're driving through a mall. That roadway is private, there's crosswalks, raised crosswalks that you don't see in public roadways. As if it's like a shopping center connecting the ShopRite to the balance of that center. And we do not have legal permission to take our tractor trailers through that section of the roadway.
Well, so now I understand that and I have to say that's unfortunate. So let me, let me turn the question around a hundred and eighty degrees. How can you assure us that trucks coming to your site are not going to make that exact left turn that you don't have? Um, the rights to, how do you make sure that they're going to go down to? New Brunswick Road, make a left and then make another left up. Old New Brunswick and then into your site, which is what your circulation plan is. And, and not make that left from Elizabeth onto Old New Brunswick Road. When you just admitted that many people do use that, so it's not like there's somebody sitting there patrolling and saying, where are you going? So how do you control that?
So, from exiting the site, part of the discussion. Again, as, or as recent as this morning was to add a physical. Barrier in terms of an island at our exit drive um, onto Old New Brunswick Road. One side would be a full height curb pork chop to, to steer the trucks physically to the right. So they'd have to make a right out of our driveway. That would control the trucks exiting.
But it wouldn't control the trucks entering, which is what I'm asking now, and, and so that is, I mean.
Chairman, if I may, part of what I had recommended was for them to reduce that radius for the entrance so that trucks could not make the turn. And that's what uh, I believe Mr. Cahill had agreed to.
Yes. Is, and we'll obviously make sure the, the emergency vehicles can get through there, but it's, we can reduce that. To almost no radius other than. Physical to make it look like it looks nice, that's it, but not. Allowing tractor trailers to make the right in to the site.
So if they were to go down that way accidentally and they don't have the turning radius, then they lap around. We got the Franklin five hundred going on here?
Well, it's, again, the, the intent is. If that was a shopping center and it is and it was, you're going into a, someone's driveway is the way I view it. I view everything. In inbound of that shopping center, private property. We have to comply with that, we have to give our guidance on how things come in and out of our track, out of our facility and provide guidance on. Truck circulation, it's going to be signed that direction. Again, there's signage for the ShopRite trucks to follow a certain route. Do they come a different route? I don't know, but it's not any different than that scenario where they're indicating where they come in and where they go out based on signage and not physical barriers.
Yeah, okay. I see what you're saying, I don't like it, but I see what you're saying. Don't, doesn't ShopRite have some cut on Elizabeth where their trucks can come in right off of Elizabeth?
They, they do have their own.
An option that ShopRite has that you wouldn't.
Right, and, and you know, when, when the ShopRite. Application was heard many years ago. There was a lot of sense in doing. What we, what was talked about by the zoning board and ultimately the council, which was to vacate the road. Which was a benefit to the shoppers to that shopping center. What I don't think anybody ever contemplated was the development of this site and the impact. That vacating that road has to this site. And by vacating that road, it was detrimental to my client's property. Because if that road was not vacated. We wouldn't be having this discussion.
It may be detrimental as a warehouse, I don't think it would be detrimental if it was retail or residential because you wouldn't have tractor trailers.
But, but back then and today and when we filed the application, it was zoned for a warehouse.
Was zoned for other things too, because that's why you were building the retail. You chose to then make it a warehouse because you couldn't make the retailer go.
But, but it was, it, but it was zoned for a warehouse and, and it's really difficult. And, and it's a tough situation, but you know. If you say you're allowed to have a warehouse here, but you can't get to it. Uh. Are you really, you know, are you really zoning it for a warehouse?
Maybe not.
Yeah, and that's, and.
Maybe, maybe, maybe you're making a great case, but anyway, um, we, uh, well, we'll move on since I understand it. Um, whether I like it or not is immaterial, let's, um, who else, Bob?
A lot of the constraints that you're working to overcome. Uh, are kind of a red flag now that maybe this property is not suitable for this site now. While. While a warehouse may be permitted and have been permitted, this was designed as a retail overlay. And retail is what. Was being developed as warehouses were not contemplated. And probably if they were contemplated would have been eliminated from this particular spot. That being said, how can, I'm not sure how you can justify. Replacing a nine thousand square foot building with one that's ten times bigger. Ninety some thousand. Your warehouse is ninety thousand three hundred feet, right? So don't look at me like I'm in a fog.
No, I don't know, the, the existing building is fifty-five thousand square feet.
You said a nine thousand square foot retail?
No, no.
Okay, it's still twice.
Just to be clear, I'll, I'll give you.
It's still roughly twice the size.
It's fifty-five thousand four hundred nineteen square feet and when you look at the lot coverage. Of your lot, we're far under the allowable. The percentage there, uh, again, we're not exceeding it, we're under the allowable, so we're not over cramming. The fact that that incumbent.
On paper you are, but this is a particular site with specific kinds of restraints. The pipeline, for instance, in your testimony and maybe it's a, a planning uh, responsibility. To me, you have given absolutely no justification to grant a variance on the pipeline. Alright, the pipeline, the variant, you, you mentioned the building is twelve feet. Now, you're looking for forty-six feet when it should be a hundred feet. But you're introducing a much different use than what the retail was. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a non-starter for me. If you move the building. If you, if you make the building comply with the setback. Reduce the size of it. I don't care what the applicant's problems are with marketing a thirty thousand square foot building. Because it also, the size of the building also presents another problem in that. All of the activity is facing the residential zone.
I just want to point out relative to the pipeline. The pipeline runs through your community, if you point out to the areas of you need a hundred feet for safety. The number of residents that are far less than that for their structure occurs today. A retail development that's open to the public that's twelve feet from it, that has anybody driving in and out of it. I don't know what the concern is from having that go through a property. If you look at the Buckeyes uh, right of way use restrictions, Rev seven point two. There's design standards to be adjacent to that pipeline. It does not prohibit uses, it does not prohibit being within a hundred feet. By the engineering and the safety aspects of why that guideline is set. The difference of any other type of structure being there, if you look at who's going to be in that structure. The number of people being in that structure versus a retail facility, I think you'd rather have an industrial facility there.
That's your, that's your, that's your opinion.
From a, from a pipeline perspective and what is design guidelines from Buckeye?
From my perspective, the ordinance says a hundred feet. If you reduce the size of the building and comply with that. You have an opportunity to address the other kinds of issues. Like the activity, all the trucking activity faces the residential properties. It should be the opposite, alright? And I don't care what those constraints do to the size of your building. That's the way it should be, alright? In my opinion, and since I have a vote, my opinion does count a little bit.
I appreciate that.
The next issue is the intersection. Well, that's coming up after that. The, the, the traffic, the truck traffic coming to your facility. Is either going to come from Elizabeth Avenue, Davidson Avenue. Or New Brunswick Road from Cedar Grove Lane. Sorry, you have a problem in my opinion. Because those roads except for Elizabeth Avenue, you have a, a problem because you're not allowed to use that entrance. But on New Brunswick Road and Davidson Avenue, you have four ton weight limits. Alright, now. Your truck traffic may not be going up Eastern Avenue. All the time to see, to New Brunswick Road, they might be coming from Amwell Road to New Brunswick Road. And they do turn onto that part of New Brunswick Road now, alright? It's the most inappropriate route for trucks that you can find. It's narrow from Cedar Grove to Davidson. To, to almost Davidson, there's no shoulders, they don't belong there, but they use it, alright? Davidson from Pierce Street to New Brunswick Road, it's a four ton limit. Now, I'm going to be told the, the old story, well, you can make a delivery to a building that's on a fourth. Well, this isn't making deliveries, this is a point of origin and departure. It's an actual warehouse business. We have a state legislator here, I don't think the legislature had it in mind in the spirit of that. That ordinance or law, municipal land use law, that. An actual point of business could be operating on a four ton road limit. You don't actually have any truck entrance, legal truck routes to get into those entrances at your driveway. And I for one would love to roll the dice and go to court for that. Because you, you don't have it. Alright? Getting to the intersection, it looks wonderful on the picture. To a point, it looks doable. But when you get out there and, and face reality and try and make a left turn coming out of. Old New Brunswick Road onto new New Brunswick Road. It's one of the more dangerous intersections around. Because you're turning into traffic coming downhill. And making a curve away from you, so when you make a left turn, you're effectively turning into the traffic. There's no truck, I don't care what your traffic expert says. That's going to efficiently make the left turn onto New Brunswick Road to go to Davidson Avenue. They're not the way it exists, going to make a right turn on Elizabeth Avenue on, on New Brunswick to go to the white. It's not going to happen, you also have a driveway to a nursing home immediately after you turn off the street that has to be considered. And you talk about sidewalks, which is a great idea, but they're no good if people coming out of Somerset Run. Walk down the hill to that street, to that New Brunswick, Old New Brunswick Road intersection and they can't cross the street. Because there's a guard rail there and you would never willingly cross that street. With the traffic going, making turns going in and out. I have my doubts if a truck can make the turn coming from Elizabeth Avenue to that intersection can make the, the left turn into New Brunswick Road. It's, it just isn't going to happen without major interference with traffic. There's routinely two or three cars at that intersection stacked. To go out onto New Brunswick Road. Those trucks can't make the turn around those stacked cars. So one thing that's real important is, I'm not voting anyway on this except no, until I. See an engineered picture of what you're going to do to that intersection. Including how you're going to comply or accommodate pedestrians that want to cross the street back and forth there. Alright, it, you, you have a lot of planning testimony to give and a lot of other testimony to give quite frankly. To go anywhere near convincing me that this is anywhere approaching an appropriate site for a warehouse. Thank you.
So, so Jim wants to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on one of the issues that you raised, Bob, and, and that's the pipeline distance variance. And you're correct that we still have planning testimony left to hear. And like any other applicant, Onyx has to demonstrate either A, a hardship or B, that it's a better zoning alternative. So we await that testimony.
And, and Mr. Thomas, I appreciate your feedback, not trying to change a couple things just relative to safety. Sidewalks and crossing from uh, the residential area at T intersections. Across to the north side, I wouldn't recommend if we built one there, it should be at a traffic signal and you have full stop. Mid-block traffic crossings, I don't think anybody would want because they are unsafe unless it's at a signalized intersection. So, we would not want to propose that at either T intersection at Marywold or at Old New Brunswick. That doesn't mean we can't build a sidewalk, but we would not encourage that for safety reasons and I think your professionals wouldn't want that either. So, from a pedestrian circulation, we could definitely show where we would highly recommend and direct. Safe crossings of New Brunswick Road, which would be towards the, the resident, uh, the retail side and Elizabeth Avenue. Where there are controlled signals with proper signalization for pedestrians. But I, I heard you loud and clear, I appreciate your feed. I appreciate your feedback, and I don't disagree. We should show you an engineer drawing of the impact on that signal, I mean, excuse me, at the intersection that shows truck turning. That's it. I'm just saying, you're absolutely right. Mr. Brown mentioned the same thing. We're not opposed to showing you an engineer drawing, and that's fine. That's your request, we understand that.
But if you know you have to change the intersection, why wouldn't you go all the way? Why is it wrong to go all the way and make it pedestrian-friendly? That's what the whole area was supposed to be in the first place. This wasn't supposed to be a warehouse area. And that goes back 20 years, because I sat on the board when you did your ShopRite application. This wasn't meant to be this way, and however it developed, it did. It was something, a warehouse slipped through the cracks. Simplest way to say it.
I understand it, and just reiterate, from a safety perspective, if it was retail, I would not want, as the person signing and sealing and drawing, to have an individual cross at a mid-block crossing. It would need to be signalized. That change of a signal there in those locations, I don't know if it warrants it, I don't know if your engineer would ever recommend that. I think the intent by all of the sidewalk around the entire community clearly directs the pedestrians in a certain pattern. And what we're looking at is complying with what your ordinance says in terms of providing sidewalk, which we will do in all those locations.
Engineer might recommend it now with this potential use. It may not have recommended it, and maybe they need to do a study there, because that is a dangerous intersection as it exists. Adding trucks to it is going to make it impossible.
And again, your engineer has provided guidance as recent as today on what would want to be shown, that road has curves in it. The great news, from an engineering perspective, we're on the outside of that curve, not on the inside. Our line of sights are visible. I understand we have to show our line of sights, we have to show the curving radiuses, and show that it's safe. And you have a great engineer that'll look out for the community to make sure that what would be proposed there is in compliance with the ASHTO standards, the DOT standards, and what his engineering judgment would recommend for safety. And that's all we can do is to address that.
Well, the last thing, real quick, it doesn't have to do with this, and you'll have to forgive me, but I can't help but getting it in for the politicians in the office, is Franklin Township has to start enforcing its traffic regulations. If we had police enforcement for truck traffic and those four-ton load limits, we might have a much different conversation tonight. But I understand that's not your problem.
Before we move on, I just want to clarify one point that Mr. Thomas made, that a warehouse slipped through the cracks. This property was always zoned M. The ShopRite property was always zoned M. The retail next to this property was always zoned M. The township then enacted a retail overlay zone. It did not eliminate the industrial zone. That zone is now a BI zone, but in essence, it's an industrial zone. The ShopRite is still in an industrial zone. The retail center on opposite ShopRite is in an industrial zone. And this site and the Hearst site are in an industrial zone. And my recollection is even the nursing home is in the BI zone. So that was always an industrial.
Let's be honest, okay? You're not wrong in that, I'm not arguing with that. However, when you did the ShopRite application and all the other ones in the area there connected with it, you did not anticipate a warehouse ever being on that property. Wasn't it you who represented this same client for the retail center and the school that was approved?
Yes.
No one, this was a retail overlay for this section, all right? No one anticipated a warehouse. So let's be honest.
Yeah, thanks, Bob, for your comments. Let's go to others on the board. Who hasn't spoken yet? Charles, I'll get back to you. Ted, go ahead.
Well, I compliment you on fixing the many things that were very, very wrong with the plans that we saw last April. For instance, it looked to me as if a truck could get into the parking lot and the loading dock, but really couldn't get out. But I think that what you have now, although we need a real, as our engineer said, we need a real demonstration that trucks can turn left and get out of the parking, of the truck parking area, which I don't think you quite have at this point, but you've said you can supply.
Ted, I think you need to speak up. Speak up.
I'm speaking about as close to the microphone as I can without eating it. One concern that I've had, and it's demonstrated in some pictures in the original application, I understand that you can't plant trees on top of the pipeline easement, and therefore there's a sort of a window out to New Brunswick Road, which probably the people who live on the other side are concerned about. I'd suggest that you, at the edges of the easement there, you plant trees, which will eventually have rather widespread branches to occupy as much of that space as possible. And possibly, if it's permitted under the conditions of the easement, that you could have herbaceous plants that grow four feet high or so, but don't have a root structure that would affect the pipeline, but that would also make the space there less of a window for people to see. On the sidewalks, I myself would not require a sidewalk on your side of New Brunswick Road, because it doesn't really lead anywhere. Where you want the sidewalk, and where I guess it does exist, is on the other side of New Brunswick Road. And then there should be, as you say, ideally, a signalized intersection. Short of that, a sidewalk with the kind of sign that you push a button and it flashes lights and then generally discourages traffic while people are crossing the street. But that's what you would want for people from Somerset Run to get to the shopping center and ShopRite. But about that exit onto New Brunswick Road from Old New Brunswick Road, I think a serious concern, I'm sure a serious concern of the audience, is that trucks would come out and turn left and go to Davidson Road, because Davidson Road comes out to Eastern Avenue very close to the entrance to 287. And that would be a considerable increase in truck traffic on the weight-limited New Brunswick Road and apparently that section of Davidson Avenue. And that, I think in itself, may be an insoluble problem for putting the trucks out of that, out of Old New Brunswick Road onto New Brunswick Road. That's exactly the kind of problem that legally they aren't supposed to do, and nobody's going to be able to stop them unless you post a police car permanently at the intersection. Kind of problems we have with the trucks idling on Randolph Road. So that, to me, is an argument against going that way. But I understand why you can't go through the private road in front of ShopRite. And all of that is a conclusion that this is not a place for a warehouse. And you, the owner previously had a proposal for a retail establishment there, which would have been reasonable, because the traffic would not have been heavy trucks. I'm sure that the legislature intended the exception for trucks making deliveries to trucks delivering to residences along a street that had a weight limitation. Residences or possibly very small businesses. Not a warehouse whose very purpose is to have trucks deliver there and trucks take away from there. And I do praise you for keeping trees along the New Brunswick Road side. I'd only suggest that perhaps you plant spice bush underneath them to make, this is if the application is otherwise approved, that you plant spice bush or something like that underneath those trees to make a greater barrier. I was somewhat surprised to see spice bush in detention basin. One, I don't think of it as a wetlands shrub. You might want to look into things that will be happy there if the detention basin fills up and doesn't drain for a couple of days. Wetlands shrubs have adaptations that enable them to survive under those conditions when the root surroundings go anaerobic. But that's why, maybe somebody know, a landscape architect knows that a spice bush is appropriate for that. But anyway, that's a fine detail, and I think the bigger concerns have been raised. Thank you.
Mr. Chase, thank you for your comments, and I appreciate specifically the comments about the sidewalk, because there is a safety issue there for crossing the road, just like cars pulling out of a driveway. You want that to happen in the safest spot. And the planning, and the master planning of where the pedestrian crossings were to be from the residential zone to come over towards the ShopRite is clear when you look at an aerial to happen at a traffic signal. Putting it at a mid-block, unless you have some of the ability to stop traffic, is concerning. And if you look at that section of road with the turns in there, it would not be anticipated to have that happen. In other words, it's not happening anywhere else on that stretch of road that you have a mid-block crossing. And the traffic engineers and your own traffic engineers and professionals can weigh in on that when it's time to do it. But we would highly encourage to have the pedestrian circulation focused at traffic signals with push buttons that give the right amount of time to allow pedestrians cross. Can't agree with you more. If it's a matter of building a sidewalk, we're not going to die on that hill, and we'll build the sidewalk. But we will not encourage crossings at either of those T-intersections and that road in that area, because in our view, and we'll let the traffic professionals weigh in, it's not the appropriate location. And we, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just don't see any purpose to a sidewalk on the north side of New Brunswick Road there, because pedestrians who walk along the south side would naturally go to the New Brunswick Road, Elizabeth Avenue intersection, which is signalized, and they could safely cross there.
You're right. Another comment relative to what you had requested. We can't plant in the easement. They actually have a section in their use regulation, in the right-of-way use restrictions, that certain plants, they want us to make sure that the limbs don't overhang, because they're going to come through and cut them anyway. Now with that, to your point, and I'll refer to A2, we'll do the best we can to add maybe parallel in that 50-foot area, which then closes that window as you drive by, right? So to that point, give us a shot to make it better and still comply with our friends, okay? So we'll do something with that. You also mentioned concern about the proposed wetlands, or the, excuse me, I don't want to say wetlands, the basins and the landscaping. We're following the NJDEP BMP manual, and the landscaping plan and the schedule shown there is all material that is required by the BMP manual for bioretention basin. The plant materials is specific, approved by the State of New Jersey's landscape architects to be planted there, and encourage that improvement of water quality and absorption of that water into the soils rather than running off. So just to let you know, I think that area is addressed, and we're following the regulations of the State of New Jersey and the BMP manual.
Okay, well, you know more about it than I do then.
And it's on the plan for your professionals to confirm?
Yeah. Just one more thing I remember I wanted to say. My concern about the pipeline is really more during the construction of the building. That is, is when, let's say, a backhoe might hit the pipeline, as happened in Edison. It's less the closeness of the building to, the finished building to the pipeline than of the construction to the pipeline. I'm sure Mr. Wisnewski is going to have something to say.
Yes, and you're absolutely right. We can't agree with you more. I've worked for other utilities like Verizon, representing their best interests on building residential developments over type of their infrastructure. It's a pipeline, we have all their standards, it's a nice manual right here, we intend to comply with it. And I will tell you, the contractor that has to deal with it is going to spend, and my client will spend a heck of a lot money, more money, for construction to comply with these regulations. And there's no intention to not, because it's what's required to do construction safely.
Okay, Annie, here, we'll go to you, and then Bob, and then I think Charles has something more to say.
Just to, I do a lot of shopping at ShopRite, and I come out on that corner over there. And I tell you, with the slope coming down this way, you got maybe five seconds to see who's coming. The slope coming around this way, you got about five seconds who's coming. I don't, I wouldn't vote for anything unless that intersection is really improved, and I see what you're doing, not imaginary or whatever. And I agree with you, Bob, that is a really dangerous corner. And I've seen a lot of residents come out of Somerset Run, walking where sometimes I can't even, I may want to give them a ride, but I'm going in that way, where I can't give them a ride. So, I mean, I want to see something about that corner, if there's anything, okay?
Um, here, please.
Okay, I'm on. All right. I, you know, I listened all to my colleagues, but I listened really intently to your proposal. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm really, really trying to get convinced that a warehouse belongs there. You know, I get it, that you're a business. I mean, the plan is beautiful, everything is beautiful, it just, this is not the spot. You look around you, there is, you know, just do the right thing. This is not the spot for it. It's really a good plan. There's a shopping center, there's a nursing home. You know, on the other side, there's a massage place. I mean, it cannot work. So I, and then also, what I found amusing is, and I tried to get convinced on this part too, all the wonderful plants that you're going to be putting in, right? 180. There could be 10,000 plants. This is not the spot for the warehouse.
Yeah, I still disagree with the comments that the sidewalks should not be placed on New Brunswick Road. I think we should provide pedestrian accommodations when and wherever we can. You also, whenever you have a T-intersection in New Jersey, whether it's marked or unmarked, it's a legal crossing. So while engineers in this state may make judgments about where pedestrians are crossing, many of those judgments are inaccurate. many of those judgments are inaccurate and thus lead to pedestrians being killed unfairly in this state. And then the determination being made that they had no right crossing there. They have a right to cross on both sides of this street because this is a T-intersection, and thus it is a legal unmarked crossing. So we should provide the crossing there for them to do so. I have another question for you, though, outside of the crosswalk. Have you asked the, where the Panera Bread entrance is, have you asked that property for an access easement so you could turn left off of Elizabeth and go through the back of that property to access your site via truck?
That's the same driveway that we've been talking about, that the Panera.
No, the back one. It's not the same one. It's the one behind the Panera, where right now is where the trash is behind the project site.
But that driveway, are you saying to take it behind Panera?
I'm just saying, first of all, I'm opposed to this development. I want to be clear of the warehouse. But if you were to do it, if you were to do it, if you were to reimagine the connection, we know you can't go through the private road. So behind the Panera, you could expand the width of the access easement there to connect to the back of your site.
Okay, we did not explore that as a possibility. That also obviously is private property.
Yeah, that's why you need access easement.
Yeah, I have not, I don't think we've looked at that as to see whether it can work, forgetting whether the owner would let us do it or not. But it's, it's an interesting suggestion and something we could perhaps look at.
Okay.
Just one quick final thing, Mike.
I think there's a height difference between the.
I think so too.
And your property.
Yeah.
And there's a wall, in fact.
To be clear what you're talking about, referring to A1, are you talking behind?
Yes, with an understanding that you may have to do some reengineering, right, to accommodate everything. But it's just a, it's just a, you know, in an ideal world with good planning, you would use access easements to accommodate travel across various sites like this as opposed to depending so heavily on the roadway system.
All right. Oh, Ram, and then Jim has, Jen, do you have? Oh, okay, Ram, and then Jim.
Yeah, thank you for all the testimony. I think this is a much better application than the last time. But I still have some concerns, but primarily of the safety of the people and the other cores in the neighborhood. I live not too far from the complex in another senior community. So I shop in that shopping mall quite a bit. And I know the traffic patterns and the number of cars that I, that pass through Old New Brunswick Road on both sides. So I am very concerned by the introducing your trucks that are delivering goods into the warehouse and then taking them out using New Brunswick Road, which I don't think is normally allowed to truck trafficking, except now you're saying that this is delivering to a location, which is questionable, subjective. Those number of trucks that are going to come in and go out are going to considerably delay the traffic, the pedestrian as well as the car traffic traveling on Old Brunswick Road in terms of the trucks that are going to make a left turn into the facility from Old New Brunswick Road are going to be backed up. So people are not going to be able to get to this shopping mall. And similarly, trucks may, going to make a left turn from Old New Brunswick Road into New Brunswick Road are going to back up, waiting for the cars to clear in the morning and the evening, the touring peak hours. That are going to terribly inconvenience the cars, the car traffic that is normally there, people like me going shopping. And don't know how much impact that's going to have in accidents, which are another major, which is another major concern for me. So I really think that intersection seems to be a huge issue in my mind in this particular plan. Have you looked at how, what's the distance between the entrance to the warehouse to the curve? How many trucks can back up there?
Yeah, if you want an exact dimension, I'll measure that. But it's, I can tell you now.
67 feet is your truck length.
Yeah, I'll measure, I'll measure for you. I just, we had traffic engineer provide testimony back in April. He's here again in terms of the number of trips in and out. And I don't want anyone to think this is an Amazon distribution facility on the number of vehicles going in and out of it on the size of a building this size. The report that was submitted is you're looking at a truck in a fraction, one in that fraction of a truck in the peak hour, okay? So it's not trucks lined up by any shape of imagination. In regards to the comments that numerous board members have made, and your engineer in talking to him is clear to us, from an engineering standard, we need to show how it can happen. It's in compliance with ASHTO standards for line of sight, for safety, and that does include vertical and horizontal curves. We have the geometry. We can do that. And the engineers can show if it meets the standards that apply to everybody, not just this applicant, but to everybody, okay? That's what is our challenge. We understand that, and we'll work with your professionals on that. In regards to understanding the vehicles, I'll measure off on the aerial. But as I mentioned, is your concern that they're going to back up Old New Brunswick Road? Because we don't anticipate, again, the number of vehicles per hour would not, is not going to be able to do that based on, again, the type of use that IT uses. And again, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'll let him put on the record for you. He'll do that for you. But understand, this isn't a distribution facility where trucks are going to be lined up coming in and out of it. It's just not that type of use. It's the size of the building that controls that. It's the marketplace that does that. It's, that's not what's going to be here. I understand that, and you have to rely on our traffic engineer based on use and what the experience of IT shows you on the trips.
Is it a spec, is spec house right now?
It is.
Okay, so there's no, you cannot guarantee this is not going to be a distribution.
Again, based on the number of loading spaces and the size of that building, that's what drives the ability for that to happen. So I'll just give you a measurement, just to make sure I'm clear on it. Specifically, you have 100 feet directly off of the intersection of New Brunswick Road to Old New Brunswick Road to the curb, and then an additional 160 feet to the radius of our driveway. So you have 260 feet there from our driveway to what would be considered a stop sign at the intersection of Old New Brunswick Road. Does that help you? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. So, so what I'm hearing is if there are three trucks that are waiting to turn into the driveway, the traffic is going to back up on New Brunswick Road.
It would be the third, the fourth truck having to do something like that. But again, in terms of this type of facility size and the loading zone, it's not a concern relative to this type of land use and what tenant we would expect to come in here.
Just a quick thing.
Yeah, one, Bob, and then Jim, and then I want to get Mr. Wisnewski out. And then we'll open to the public for the time that's left for crossing that. Mr. Cahill, sorry, sorry. Okay, first of all, yeah, can we, can we have quiet? Second of all, I'm sorry, I will repeat it. We're going to go to Bob, and then we're going to go to Jim, and then we're going to get Mr. Wisnewski out for the pipeline. And then we'll open to the public for questions for Mr. Cahill. I think that's what we'll get to tonight, so.
Just a quick follow-up to the pedestrian crossing that we've been, that's been discussed. I understand when you say there are concerns about safety of a mid-block crossing. I will say this. I do a lot of traveling to a lot of different towns in this area. Metatchin is one place, Edison, Woodbridge, South Brunswick. There, there's many mid-block crossings that have pedestrian signals. This, no matter what people want to make it seem, New Brunswick Road is a residential street. The speed limit is about, I think it's 35 miles an hour. I think if a proper facility were installed, it would work. Because I think a lot of the traffic, except for the new trucks that are going to be potentially coming, are routine travelers that use the route regularly and get used to seeing that there. I don't understand, I'm told all the time, we can't do things in Franklin like this, but other towns do it. We can't give trucks tickets, but other towns do it. I don't understand. Just maybe consider it again. If it can't be, it can't be. But I see this situation a lot of places where I travel.
I appreciate your feedback. And again, the concern would be safety. Again, on a T-intersection, parallel to the roadway across Old New Brunswick Road? Not a problem. The handicap ramps, as I mentioned, making sure we have that, no problem. It's the other direction for that reason. And again, I'll let other professionals weigh in too because traffic engineers focus on that much more than I do. But I tell you, I'm the one that has to put my hand, my signature on the right-hand corner and sign and seal it. And safety is paramount for that. And again, if it all shows it works, love to. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying, let's make sure safety is addressing it, and it could be, it can't be done.
Usually, we have found lots of things can be done if people are willing to spend the money to do it. That's usually a big issue.
Yeah, it's called a HAWK signal. That was for free.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cahill, you testified that there are 47 parking stalls being proposed.
Yes.
What does the ordinance require?
Forty-seven.
All right, so you're not overparked?
No.
Okay. What's the status of the application before the county planning board?
We resubmitted to them with the new set of plans that came in here. We have not heard anything back. We addressed their comments in our resubmission.
Okay. What's the status with the Delaware River Canal Commission?
We also have comments from them. We've addressed them in terms of the stormwater management from my testimony, and it's back into their court as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Jim, how do you handle?
Yeah, let's, as we previously discussed, we want to give Mr. Wisnewski on behalf of Buckeye Pipeline an opportunity to present whatever comments he has with respect to the application. Once again, remembering he is not a fact witness, he is an advocate as an attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, my name is John Wisnewski. I represent Buckeye Partners LP. Buckeye is a 138-year-old pipes and terminals company. And in this particular application, Buckeye obtained a property right to the property that is subject to development in this application. So I just want to underscore that. Buckeye has a property right on this property. That property right was granted some 70 years ago by a prior owner. And that property right says a couple of things in the deed of easement that are relevant to this application and relevant for whatever consideration the board will make of this application. There are four items that the easement speaks to, perhaps in some cases prohibits. It says the grantor shall not, the grantor in this case being the current property owner, place any building or structure on the easement. Building or structure on the easement. And the grantor shall not engage in any activity that would directly or indirectly alter the depth of soil coverage over or in that easement. And those really are the two fundamental issues that brings Buckeye to this hearing tonight. We have an engineer who is responsible for Buckeye's easements that would be available to testify and understand that that's not appropriate this evening pending the conclusion of this witness's testimony and the questioning. But Buckeye is concerned, not only do we have the standards that Mr. Cahill has said that the applicant is willing to comply with, those standards are separate and apart from the restrictions that are in that easement. And I would just draw the board to pay attention and look at those easements critically, the requirements in that easement critically, because I think they speak volume. I also want to speak to the 100-foot setback. Now certainly, that is a township ordinance. Buckeye is a beneficiary of that township ordinance. And we can all acknowledge that, for instance, when this easement was granted 70 years ago, that ordinance did not exist. But it does today. And that, that ease, that requirement in ordinance, in order to vacate that or to give relief from that, one of the critical things is that the person seeking relief cannot be responsible for creating the hardship that they're seeking relief from. This property owner bought a property that has an easement on it for 70 years. This is not new. And so we just want the property rights that Buckeye acquired 70 years ago to be honored this year in whatever development is finally approved by this board. We take no position as to whether the board should approve or not approve. We do take a position that our easement ought to be honored and respected and our property rights adhere to. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And we do want to hear from your engineer, and we will ask that that happen at the next hearing. What I, so we can get the details of how the current proposal impacts or does not impact, what was the safety and the things you mentioned in terms of the historical agreements. For the remainder.
Mr. Orsini, may I just make a quick response to Mr. Wisnewski's statement?
Absolutely.
We don't disagree with anything he said. And I think if you heard Mr. Cahill during his presentation, he clearly indicated it was, it was our intent to honor the obligations that we have under the terms of the easement. After the last hearing in April, there were discussions with Buckeye concerning their issues. We are aware of them. We have not yet finalized how to resolve them. But we think, as Mr. Cahill said, we can. We were driven by some stormwater management issues which conflict with some of the things that they're looking for us to do. So we're trying to work through those things and go back to them so that hopefully by the time we come back to the next hearing, we and the representatives of Buckeye will be on the same page to have to you what we are going to do to indicate that we are in compliance with their regulations and that we are in compliance with the terms of the easement.
Yes, and that, I totally agree that that is exactly what, what we'd like to see as a board too, is how that is satisfied. In the remaining time we have, and in deference to the number of people who are here for this hearing, I would like to open it to the public for any questions they may have of Mr. Cahill. And again, to make the best use of the time, and as, as Mr. Clarkin said at the outset of the hearing, your opinions, your personal beliefs, whether the application should be approved or not, will all be heard at the final public opening. This is to ask questions specifically of this witness, so I would ask you to keep to that. And I will direct you to keep to it if you decide not to. With that, I.
Mr. Orsini, I'm sorry, one more thing, just for the benefit of the public too. I have three additional witnesses that I intend to present. I have three additional witnesses that I intend to present, including a traffic expert, the architect, and also a planner. So that if members of the public have questions along those lines, they should wait until those witnesses are called, but we're happy to answer all engineering questions.
Absolutely, and you know, that's just something you can say if somebody from the public comes up with a question that you can't answer, just say that that will happen with the testimony of whomever. That being said, I'll make a motion to open to the public. And we got a second, all in favor?
Second.
All right, meeting is open to the public if you can state your name and address.
While this picture's up here, I have a question on the turning radius.
You're gonna have to get a mic.
We won't, you can't leave it. Mr. Cahill indicated the turning radius they were looking at was... Okay, Mr. Cahill indicated that they were working on a turning radius going right out of Old New Brunswick, and that they were looking at this. My question is, are you going to look at this turning radius off of New Brunswick, which is very tight? All the truck traffic is probably going to be coming down from this direction. Can they make this turn without modifying this turning radius as well? You don't own this property, I don't think, so something's going to have to be done there. What would be, how would you handle that?
Yep, so as your board members and your professionals have asked, is that we need to show that in engineering? And we will, and you're absolutely right. We need to make sure the right turn, if you're heading west on, actually, if you're heading towards Elizabeth Avenue on Old New Brunswick Road, I'd have to make the right. I'd also have to make that right out. And I am, I was heard, I heard very clearly, I need to show both work, and would happen at the same time as if there was two trucks sitting there. So I know my restrictions, and we will show how we can do that.
All right, next question. I've reviewed all the documents that you've spent, in addition to what's being discussed here today. Why did you replace a WB 67 truck with a WB 67 New Jersey Title Truck to shorten the truck by two feet, to make it easier to make the turning radius at 147 feet? Why was that done?
Because that is the vehicle that the state of New Jersey allows to have in New Jersey.
What happens if a real WB 67 truck shows up at Onyx?
It's not allowed to happen in the state of New Jersey. It's kind of like, if you've been in other states where you have heavier, I'll use gasoline trucks that deliver to gas stations, New Jersey limits it to 10,000 gallons as a maximum-sized truck. In other states, it can have 12,000 or 15,000 gallons, because the infrastructure's different. So in the state of New Jersey, they adopted the geometry of what they call a Title 39. And your engineer accurately pointed it out. We inaccurately shown it, and we were actually more conservative originally, and then asked to show the actual one. And we have shown that both do work. And again, I will confidently say that our site onsite and exiting the site will comply with the vehicle that your professionals recommend, as well as dated in New Jersey.
Mr. Cahill, can you also just confirm the size of that truck for Mr. Robinson?
Sure, if you don't mind, I gotta look at that exhibit.
Seventy-one and a half, is it?
What changed? Just so you're clear, the wheelbase ends up getting two feet shorter, the pin distance was longer, the actual distance of the vehicle, I will show you, it's on the truck turning exhibit that was submitted. And the revision was done when we discussed this with your engineer.
Mr. Cahill, just for the record, is that document that you're referring to part of our plan submission?
Yes, on the last sheet, second to last sheet for truck turning exhibits, we had the vehicle shown. The name of that sheet, just for the record, WB 67 Truck Turning Exhibit Sheet 1 was dated 3/30/2023, and that was the geometry that showed five feet on the pin. The design that's shown you right now is the vehicle and the exact geometry that the NJ Title 39 drawing is for WB 67. If I misquoted that by any way, because I'm not the traffic engineer, he's sitting back here, but Darren, if you want to back me up, that our intent is to use the vehicle that you want, which is accurate to what the state asks us to use?
That is correct. What Mr. Robinson is questioning is the original submission was a 71 and a half-foot truck, which you guys have now revised back to a 73 and a half-foot truck.
Yes.
I think that's the juxtaposition.
Mr. Thomas asked a couple of questions relative to the orientation of the building. If this design or proposal were to go through, would you consider reversing the orientation of the building to put the parking lot for the cars over and next to the pipeline easement, rather than 60 to 70 trucks pounding away on top of the easement every day? If you reoriented the building, the parking lot for cars would put less stress on the pipeline easement.
So again, from our planning perspective, and our planner will also identify, in his testimony, but from a layout perspective, we did evaluate what that would do. And if you look at the geometry that's required on a truck court coming off of a building, and then apply the adequate setbacks from what I'll say the rear of the shopping center, it starts to push over top of the pipeline. We hence then said, we will comply with the pipeline, we can't have any structure, as you heard. Therefore, we followed what the ordinance allows in terms of, when you have these uses adjacent to each other, what is required by this ordinance and by your town. It's a buffer. We complied with all the conditions. The town's master plan and this ordinance anticipated uses being adjacent to each other, and they gave guidance to applicants to follow. Your planner's report indicates that we do follow those buffer requirements in accordance with what has to happen to shield use. So looking at this layout, we mitigated the concern of having the activity on that side of the building by following the ordinance. That's what we were asked to do, that's what your ordinance says and what the master plan says. We did that. Reversing it, as I mentioned, has a detriment to the layout from our perspective.
You proposed screening and six-foot-high wall and trees.
Yes.
You proudly said that there's more plantings in the revised drawings than there were on the original plants, plans. They went up, but a lot of those were shrubs and smaller grasses. The actual number of trees in the revised plan went down from 228 to 184. Those trees are 10-foot trees, the evergreens are 10-foot trees, the deciduous trees will lose their leaves in the fall, the entire backside will be exposed until these trees take 10 to 15 years to mature. How is that adequate screening for the truck bays that will face Somerset Run?
Again, in regards to what is required and what we do to shield, we are providing a vertical and a solid separation with a fence day one. We are then supplementing with eight-to-10-foot-high evergreen trees, and they are double-staggered across it. Those trees grow at a rate and will continue to grow above the height of that tree that will again shield the activities within our courtyard.
But you do agree it'll take 10 to 15 years to reach...
I do not believe it'll take that long. Again, the day-one shielding will prevent the fence at the lowest levels, and the evergreens in the double stagger at eight-to-10-foot height will continue to grow. It's, there's no requirement to have zero visibility to any height in the requirements of your ordinance or any ordinance in the state relative to buffering. We were provided the guidance of how to buffer this use relative to other uses, and that's what we've complied with.
All right. In the engineer's letter, there was a request for a contamination. It was comment number 11, NJDEP Geotech Shows Groundwater Contamination. You replied, and you supplied something called a preliminary assessment report, which was dated 2014. I don't know how that could still be considered preliminary, but it was included, and included in that 380-some pages of data, was a discussion of the contamination on this site back when it was a retail mall presentation by your concern. And there were 20 areas of concern relative to contamination and pollution and other things mentioned in that report, 18 of which were approved or recommended or remediated. There were two that stated that they needed further remediation between Polycorp and the developer. There was no proof that that remediation was done, not to my knowledge, I couldn't see it in the 300 pages, that those two remediations for groundwater, one was for groundwater contamination, the other was for vapor. Do you have documentation that those remediations were successful?
I am a civil engineer and not the environmental consultant, however, I will answer to the NJDEP case, that a no further action letter was issued. We have an LSRP on this facility, and we just recently got a letter, which again, is challenging to submit, relate. It was, we have just received, so we will provide, and it will be submitted to your professionals to review. Again, in terms of the jurisdiction of this board, in terms of zoning, this does not fall into that purview. However, we are under the jurisdiction of NJDEP, and the remediation requirements in the LSRP and their report will satisfy that condition, and your professionals can verify that.
All right. And my final question has to do with the environmental impact statement that was part of this submission. There's quite a few pages associated with a lot of different things, but there's not really much documentation referencing air pollution, noise, and air quality as a result of this development. There's no mention of data taken, studies taken, references provided for what amount of truck pollution will come from the site that's going to have 60 to 70 trucks per day going in and out of and backing up. Why isn't there more documentation relative to the air pollution and contamination from diesel, very harming diesel emissions?
I'll just reiterate what the requirements are to show in the environmental reports, the EIS. We've addressed that, and it was also submitted to your own environmental commission in regards to reviewing that. I will state by the land use, the anticipated truck traffic being on this site will be no different, or the number of vehicles in and out of this facility is far less than if it was another type of land use like retail. In regards to pollution, again, the standards relative to the vehicles that would be onsite by a permitted use, there is no standard to say that it has to be shown, but the use of this property, as it is zoned and allowed to have this and in compliance with all the zoning regulations, doesn't trigger the need from a threshold to say there's a concern from that. There are state regulations that need to be complied with from a noise perspective that has to be, we will comply with it very easily. There's, you mentioned the air pollution. Again, based on the number of vehicles, based on this use, and that the fact that this is a permitted use in this area, there's no concern. There's residents, if you think about it, and where residents exist around highways and the number of vehicles that are along here, these are roads that are intended to have vehicles like this. It's not a pollution concern.
You're saying New Brunswick Road is a road that's intended to have 60 or 70 trucks a day traveling over?
What I'm saying is...
Next to a residential community?
Is it permitted in terms of vehicles adjacent on arterial roads that are also adjacent to residents? It occurs every single day that in this case, there is not meeting a standard that would be a concern from air pollution.
You've mentioned a couple of times, and I know we haven't addressed the traffic engineer yet, and I have several questions for that on those reports. You've mentioned a couple of times, there's only a couple of trucks coming out here. Do you know how many trucks are coming out there during peak hours?
It's in the...
Do you know how, excuse me, but do you know how many trucks will be coming out of there in 2026 or '27, when this warehouse would be functional?
I will let the traffic engineer answer that, because there are standards of how to project what it is for a use. He can describe that, and it's in this report as well.
I understand, I know what the numbers are, but it's not a few. I have no more questions.
My name is Bernard Goldban. I'm 8208 Westover Way, Somerset. Having recently driven down Dennison Road, Dennison Road, watching a truck, an 18-wheeler making a right-hand turn onto Pierce, several cars had to back up for them to do it, and it was amazing. But considering your proposal, you're looking to use Elizabeth Avenue to turn left into New Brunswick Road. That is a one-lane road in each direction. When it comes to New Brunswick Avenue, we have a turn lane. That turn lane could probably not accommodate a 16-wheeler. So what you're going to be doing is backing up cars on Elizabeth Avenue for a while until the light changes. Are you prepared? Have you discussed that? You considered that? Have you considered that?
Which is the question? Is it, did I consider Elizabeth Avenue a left turn?
Did you consider the left turn?
We'll let our traffic engineer say that, but I would respond to what makes sense in the world of industrial. Vehicles are going to be coming from and to a spot. If you look at your highways, exit 10 and exit 12, what is convenient? If anybody drives down Davidson Road in a vehicle and tries to get on 287, it's challenging enough. They may want to go a different direction, which is designed for tractor-trailers and goes through Cotton Tail down to exit 12. However, if they're traveling north on 287, they may come from that direction, want to come there. We will address, as we mentioned, the concerns that were raised in as recent as today of a conversation, which is not in a letter, but was in a conversation, to address. And I will repeat it so that we may avoid these questions from a bunch of people. We will look at the turning movements to and from this site that would be best or most anticipated to come, and if there's an impact, we need to address it.
In doing your design, in doing this design, you had to address that, or else you have to rip it apart. This design doesn't accommodate turning references. How do you do turning, how do you do a design like this without considering any ingress and regress?
Yeah, so, sorry, the board has asked the applicant to come back with all of that information, not only for the turn that you're referring to, Elizabeth to New Brunswick, but also the turns left and right from Old New Brunswick on to New Brunswick.
Correct.
So by the time we have our next hearing, and we'll get to it in a little bit when that is, we're going to ask the applicant to come back, and we're not going to basically render a decision on the application until they provide that testimony. When they do provide that testimony, if it's not to your satisfaction, I would encourage you to ask the question again.
In addition, the chart that you have here, it can properly represent Old Brunswick Road into New Brunswick Road that... Road into New Brunswick Road that may be really more of a T than a J.
Yes, and that's what we've asked them to address in terms of an engineering standpoint, and in terms of the, not only the turn on their property, but also across.
Thank you.
I'm Jeffrey Friedman, I live in Somerset Run, which is the residential area opposite the proposed warehouse, and several questions. One is, what is the operation of this warehouse? Is it a 24-hour or 8-hour operation?
We anticipate 24 hours.
Okay. So I'd like to address, and the lighting will be, the site lighting will be on 24 hours a day or 12 hours a day to accommodate night operations, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. When, I believe when ShopRite and the adjacent strip mall was built, there were some restrictions imposed upon lighting at ShopRite and that strip mall at certain hours, so that the residents of the carriage houses, the apartments that face New Brunswick Road would not be disturbed because their bedrooms face that area. So I'd like to know if there are going to be proposed, or do they, does the developer have to abide by those restrictions that were imposed on that other site where ShopRite and the strip malls located?
Should the board choose to? No, the applicant can propose a 24-hour operation, that doesn't mean the board has to agree to a 24-hour operation. We could actually put reasonable restrictions on it, based on where it is and based on sound planning testimony, and I would be inclined to think that we would do that. So while we haven't gotten to that in the testimony yet tonight, until you raised your question, it is well within the planning board's purview to put reasonable restrictions on, such as the ones you're talking about.
Yeah, because even if it's only eight or 12-hour operation, I'm sure they would use that lighting for security purposes for the stuff that's in the warehouse.
Yeah, and, but there is a difference between like lighting a site for security, where you may have like building-mounted lights that face downward, to lighting a site for general use, where you would have, you know, you go into a ShopRite and there's 20-foot poles, and they're on as long as ShopRite's open. So the board can consider different ways that security lighting and general lighting can be cut off at reasonable hours, given the fact that this site is next to a residential area.
Okay, right, my next question is that this is for 24-hour operation, that the noise from these trucks will actually, will disturb not only the people in Somerset Run, but also the patients or residents of the nursing home? And that, that, you know, low-frequency noise travels much further than high-frequency noise, and the noise from the trucks is basically a low-frequency noise. So I think that should be addressed by the developer and also the board. Wait, and there was a recent study, and I'm not sure if you're, the developer's aware of it, or even if the board's aware of it, but there's a paper by George Washington University that addresses pollution from trucks at warehouses. And it says, to make the summary, is that there's 20%-
You object to reference to a study because I can't cross-examine it?
Okay, so I would recommend that both the developer and the board look at this study, it was published sometime last year, and I can give you the details after the meeting, if you want to.
The board, the board cannot accept the details, except at a public meeting, that everybody can hear.
Oh, okay. So it's, was published by researchers at George Washington University, and it addresses air pollution associated with large warehouses. Now, while this may not be a large warehouse, it adds on to the pollution, the oxides of nitrogen-
I'm going, Mr. Clark, and I'm going to reject-
-in the air from the other warehouses. So, you know, there's over 55 place across the street, and there's a nursing home next door, so this just adds on to any respiratory overload that the residents of those places may have.
Unfortunately, I have to say that, well, that's interesting and, and I'm sure factual. The board really, the board is really limited to consider what is in municipal land use law, and unfortunately, those, that's not part of it unless it were to be added to municipal land use law that, you know, certain amount of pollution or noise can't be within. I mean, they do have to comply with a noise ordinance, but I have heard no testimony that suggests they would be able to do that. And as far as pollution, there's, there's, there's nothing in the, in the municipal land use law that we as a board can really use there.
So it would be a state or county that could address that?
No, I mean, if it were a state or county, if it were a state law, state municipal land use law, then we could obviously abide by that, but there isn't, as far as I know, or our attorney knows, that speaks to that.
There is not. It is not a factor that the MLUL, municipal land use law, allows a board to consider.
So given the hour, I'm going to let you ask your question. Anybody else who wants to ask questions, when we continue this hearing, and Christine will give us the details of when that will be, we will start with an opening to the public and continue questions to Mr. Cahill before we open up to new witnesses, so everybody will get a chance to ask their questions. So ma'am, if you'd like to close this out for tonight.
Okay. Susan Kaplan, 4207 Chesterwood Way. Whose responsibility would it be to clean up the current site? Two hours ago, Mr. Cahill said it looked terrible. Whose responsibility is it? Is it not the applicant? So couldn't Onyx clean it up if they felt like it?
I did mention, too, that the, in conversation with the fire official who also we spoke with, we have started cleaning things up there, and the applicant's going to continue to do so.
Eighteen months. My other comment is that it was stated and admitted tonight that all of the regulations in the world about the weight of vehicles and who's permitted on which roads and who can turn left and who can turn right, none of it is being enforced. And I think that together with this plan, if it is approved, it must come alongside a plan for enforcement of traffic regulations. So it will wind up costing the township a lot of money in extra time for officers to monitor the traffic. And as the first pedestrian crossing New Brunswick Road, I would love for the developers to do it.
Acknowledged, and, you know, we have some star power in the audience, in the mayor and deputy mayor, and we had Assemblyman Danielson here, so they no doubt have heard you and hopefully will take appropriate action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, again, we will continue before any more testimony to make sure everybody can hear, everybody can get their questions in at the opening of the next hearing, which, Christine, you're going to tell us when it is.
Yeah, the next meeting will be, well, actually, Onyx will be carried to March 19th here in this building at 7:30 PM.
Okay, thanks so much. Do we have any other business tonight?
Just before, Mr. Lanford, Mr. Lanford?
Excuse me?
Do you extend the board's time to act until March 19th, sir?
I will grant the board an extension of time to act through the end of March of this year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so March 19th, 7:30 PM in this room, we will continue. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?